I'd like to call this meeting of the Regional Planning Commission to order for February, or February, for August 27th, 2021. And I need to read this notice pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order establishing a pandemic disaster in the state of Illinois that covers the county of Champaign and the RPC CEO's determination that holding this meeting cannot be safely held in person during this ongoing
Reporting in progress.
pandemic due to space issues and health concerns with rising numbers of COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations being reported in the county. The RPC Commissioners' meeting will be held remotely via Zoom. Public comment also will be taken remotely. First item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Mayor Finan. Christopher Walton. Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Present.
Patrick Brown. Mary Alice Wu. Here. Darlene Kleppel.
Here.
Kyle Patterson. Jim Goss.
Here.
Tom Bruno. Katina Wiltshire.
I'm here.
And Mary Marlin.
Present.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Who was that that moved?
Christopher Walton.
Hi, Chris. Okay. Moved by Christopher Walton, seconded by Tammy?
Yes.
Okay. Could we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Finan. Christopher Walton.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Present, yes. All right.
Patrick Brown. Mary Alice Wu.
Aye.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Kyle Patterson. Jim Goss.
Yes.
Tom Bruno. Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mary Marlin.
Yes, that motion carries. Is there any audience participation today? Let me check.
I don't see any there.
Okay. I don't see any either. Okay, we'll move on to minutes from the June 25th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the RPC draft meeting minutes for June 25th, 2021?
So moved.
Please identify.
Goss.
Goss moved.
Darlene, second.
Darlene, seconded. Any discussion? Okay, will the clerk, uh, please call the roll.
Mayor Finan. Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus. Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Kyle Patterson. Jim Goss.
Yes.
Tom Bruno.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Finan. Marlin, excuse me.
Yes, I'm here.
Both mayors, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda, consolidated financial reports for Betty Murphy.
Yes, good morning, everyone. So you have the consolidated financial reports as of June 2021. Our fund balance at that point was just over $17.2 million. Our receivables were slightly over a million. July 21, $17.2 million again, and receivable slightly higher at 1.2. Uh, these fund balances, of course, remain healthy, but they do reflect receipt of the U.S. Treasury advanced payments for our emergency rental assistance program. So they seem high, but that's because we received these advanced payments, and that money is being dispersed just as quickly as we can respond to the demand. Um, all fund balances remain healthy.
Any questions for Betty? Looking for hands. Okay. Um, do we need a vote on that report?
Yes, we do.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the consolidated financial reports for June and July 2021?
Mary Alice, so moved. Second, Darlene.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Darlene. Any further discussion? All right, look, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Finan. Yes. Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Jim Kyle, uh, Kyle Patterson, I'm sorry, excuse me. Jim Goss.
Yes.
Tom Bruno.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Marlin.
Yes, that motion carries. Next item is list of bills, Betty.
Sure, so the volume of bill processing, as you might expect, is fairly significant, and this is because we've received such a significant level of federal response and recovery funding for direct client assistance. Um, and all charges are appropriate, there is nothing unusual to report.
Any questions for Betty? Okay, could I get a motion to accept and place on file the list of bills for June and July 2021?
So moved, Christopher.
Second, Deb.
Moved by Christopher, seconded by Deb. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Finan.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Jim Goss.
Yes.
Tom Bruno.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Marlin.
Yes, that motion carries. Next action item is the FY '22 RPC proposed budget.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners, thank you, Mayor.
Good morning.
It would be my, uh, distinct pleasure to present to you our proposed preliminary FY 2022 budget. Uh, just to note that, um, uh, this is again a preliminary budget. We will have our full budget approval in November, once we present the compensation uh, plan for the RPC. Uh, so, uh, if we could go to the next slide. So for the FY 2022 total agency budget, um, as you can see, we actually show comparison to, uh, what was presented for the current budget FY 2021, but I'll focus on the 2022 budget. Uh, revenues, uh, budgeted for FY '22 is $48,427,561, with expenditures of $48,222,792. This total agency budget represents, uh, uh, 365 FTEs. Uh, it accommodates five of our, uh, funds, includes more than 100 grants, uh, in aid program areas. Uh, as you know, the RPC's funding, uh, is primarily grants, state and federal, so the funding, uh, that's being presented here, um, the 90% of the funds are from state and federal grants. Uh, staffing levels will increase, we're estimating by about 10 FTEs, and then the administrative costs are less than 7.8% of the agency budget. Uh, every year, we highlight this to you Commissioners, because, uh, we're very proud of the fact that we keep our administrative costs below what is, uh, allowed by both the federal government, as well as the state of Illinois. The federal government allows us up to, I believe, 15%, and the state allows us up to about 19%, and so we're at a 7.8% of the total agency budget. Uh, next slide, please. So the first fund I'd, I'd like to highlight will be our operating fund, which is Fund 075. Uh, this represents revenues of $30,219,707, with expenditures of $30,111,742. Uh, this fund represents, uh, if 132 FTEs. I do want to highlight the, uh, high, um, restricted, uh, budget fund balance of $8,221,221. Uh, this is due to the fact that, uh, we have an advance of, um, uh, federal funding from the U.S. Department of Treasury for our emergency rental assistance program. Typically, with the grants that we receive, we usually earn those after we have incurred expenses and we submit, uh, uh, for reimbursement to our funding sources, but this was a little bit unusual whereby the federal government actually advanced, uh, the funds, and so that's why we have such a high, uh, fund balance, uh, in our operating fund. Uh, but the, this fund, uh, uh, represents a sustained growth potential in FY 2022, uh, primarily due to the recovery efforts, uh, and these include regional initiatives, emergency rental assistance, uh, planning, uh, developmental disabilities, uh, programs, social services, as well as the implementation of our energy efficiency and assistance programs. Uh, the staffing level increases, again, are proportionate to the grant funding, as well as what our planned outcomes are, uh, with our funding sources. Uh, this again represents, uh, the administrative cost of less than 7.8% of the agency's, uh, total operating budget. Next slide, please. Our next fund is our early childhood fund, Fund 104. This is the fund whereby we have our Head Start, uh, funding, as well as our, uh, other funding from the Illinois State Board of Education. Revenues expected, uh, budgeted for FY '22 is $13,52,400, with expenditures of $13,200,250. Uh, this represents, uh, 175 FTEs, with a budgeted fund balance of $1,395,830. Uh, the early childhood balance will increase slightly in FY 2020, 22, due to the continued loss of full day subsidy reimbursements. Uh, I think we've reported to you before that due to the fact that, uh, with the pandemic, uh, particularly last year, when we were not, um, providing, um, onsite, um, programming, uh, we were not able to, um, get reimbursements from, from the state. Uh, the restricted fund balance, again, uh, will be, will be utilized to meet cash flow requirements and the liability for compensated absences, facility, infrastructure, uh, upgrades. Um, we hope to continue to provide, uh, center-based programming. Um, if this pandemic, uh, continues, uh, then the virtual, uh, approaches that we used last year will have to be put into effect. Um, but then the fund, uh, includes sustained efforts to incorporate, uh, other approaches, uh, as we, again, uh, deal with this pandemic, uh, we're trying to be, uh, more creative, uh, in serving our children and families in the community. Uh, next slide, please. Our next, uh, fund, uh, is Fund 110, which is our workforce, uh, fund. Uh, the revenues expected here for FY 2022 are $4,529,954, with expenditures of $4,635,300. This represents 58, uh, FTEs. The negative, uh, uh, budgeted fund balance is due to the fact that, uh, there's a timing issue with the federal funds, which are passed through, uh, the state, the Department of Commerce, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. Uh, however, we do expect, uh, full recovery, um, that this will be realized at the end of our, uh, two-year grant formula. So the, the grants that we receive for workforce are, are, are a two-year cycle, and, uh, we expect that we will get fully reimbursed by the end of those grants. Uh, but then this fund includes, uh, federal pro, uh, formula grant funding to support businesses and job seeker demand for training and career services in our five-county workforce area. Moving on to the next fund. Our next fund is Fund 47, 475, which is our Economic Development Fund. Uh, with this fund, we're expecting revenues of $610,500, with expenditures of, um, $233,500. The, um, the budgeted fund balance, uh, which is also restricted, is $7,726,761. Uh, within this, there's, you know, the loan receivables, and then we're also expecting to be able to make, uh, any other, uh, loans, uh, contained within this budgeted fund balance. Uh, again, it accommodates restricted revolving loan portfolio, uh, with proportionate job creation, and we hope, uh, to continue to improve economic, uh, conditions, and hopefully we'll get more of our, uh, demand, uh, for our loans, uh, that we provide through this fund. The last fund, uh, to highlight is Fund 474, which is our USDA loan fund. Uh, with this, we're expecting revenues of $15,000 and expenditures of $42,000. The budgeted fund balance is $846,953, and again, this is, um, uh, the loan through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and it's our intermediary revolving loan program, where we're able to provide low-interest loans in rural areas with a population of less than 25,000. Uh, the last loan we did was to the Village of Royal, uh, which was to assist with their, uh, wastewater infrastructure for their downtown, uh, area. Uh, the, we're estimating disbursements of $150,000, uh, in FY 2022. Uh, I'm now going to, uh, defer to Betty, uh, Murphy to highlight, uh, some of the, uh, local contributions that are part of our FY '22 budget. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
So, um, in your budget document, on page roman numeral nine, uh, I, we've indicated the local impacts of the RPC budget. As Delitza pointed out, we are, you know, primarily federal, state, and local contract-funded, so we get, uh, we don't receive any kind of tax basis for the Regional Planning Commission, but I have outlined the local contributions that impact each of the units of government. So on page nine, I've indicated the amount for the QWAT's contributions, and that is with a 0% increase for FY '22, as per the QWAT's Policy Committee. The membership fees for the RPC, again, that's a $1,000 base, plus 64 cents per capita. There is a 0% increase for membership fees for FY '22. The police training grant, again, a 0% increase, that police training that provides the match for over $400,000 in state funding for law enforcement and correctional personnel, advanced training. And then the Youth Assessment Center, uh, which is primarily funded from the public safety sales tax, indicates a 15% increase, and that's responsive to the increased demand for these services, as well as a portion of funding from the city of Champaign. Uh, the justice diversion at $53,104, this is for a countywide justice diversion initiative funded through the Sheriff's Department budget. Those are the only or the primary direct contributions from the local units of government.
Thank you, Betty.
Happy to take any questions related to the FY '22 budget.
Any questions for Betty or Delitza?
Your Honor, not necessarily a question, more of a comment. I just wanted to commend staff on their work that they have done with this. I think it's very commendable for them to continue to do this awesome work with the funding that they've got, and I know that over the last couple of years, there's been some funding issues of them making sure that they have the appropriate resources, so I didn't want to go unsaid. That staff has done a great job making sure that this has happened, and I'm very proud of the work that they've done.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I'd certainly echo those of Christopher Walton, and, um, RPC has just been a, a tremendous partner throughout the pandemic in helping us prevent homelessness and providing the services to the community. I did have a question, you may not be able to answer it today, but I, I would like to get just a round number for the amount of rental assistance that's been provided to, um, the, the, the county, your service area, for FY '21 and '22, just to get a sense of that. And, and if, if you can't answer it today, we can, I can get it later. Go ahead, Lisa.
Um, I actually have some prepared, um, information, and during my report, I'll share that, and if there's
Oh, wonderful, okay. And, and my one observation is, uh, RPC's budget is now approximately the same size as the city's upper banner, which is kind of astonishing, so.
One thing, just to add, Mayor, uh, last, last week, I presented to the county board just the funding that the Regional Planning Commission has received, uh, to provide, uh, relief and assistance, uh, due to the pandemic. Uh, so between, combined from last year, as well as current funding, uh, it's a little over $20 million that, um, we've, we have received, uh, to provide direct assistance related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
And that's in Champaign County?
Champaign County, that's correct.
That's astonishing. Any other questions? Thank you. Uh, we need a, um, let's see, where am I? A motion to accept and place on file the FY '22 budget proposal.
So moved, Christopher.
Second, Darlene.
Moved by Christopher, seconded by Darlene. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Finan.
Christopher. Sorry, I couldn't get my mic.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Jim Goss.
Yes, yes.
Tom Bruno.
Tom Bruno, yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Marlin.
Yes. Um, next item is employee health insurance.
Sure, good morning. Um, the Champaign County has decided again to offer a premium Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois PPO plan to all of its employees in FY '22. Uh, this plan will cover the calendar year, uh, beginning January 1, with a premium rate increase of 6.89%. Um, the county will continue to offer a four-tier premium plan for employee, employee-plus-spouse, employee-plus-children, and family coverage. I've attached the four plan tiers, uh, in a spreadsheet attached to this memorandum. The Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO plan has a $2,000 in-network deductible and a $4,000 out-of-network deductible. Um, I've attached the comparative health insurance contribution rates for both bargaining unit and non-bargaining unit employees. Uh, for non-bargaining unit employees, the employer maximum contribution will increase to $825 per month, and the employee contribution will remain at $135 per month with no increase. An additional $70 per month will be added to the employer portion for dependent coverage. Uh, the 2022 non-bargaining unit employer employee contributions are consistent with an 86% employer, 14% employee cost allocation. Based on comparability with other public sector employers and consistent with the health insurance benefit offered to our bargaining unit employees, we recommend the increased employer contribution to health insurance premiums in FY '22. This strategy will allow us to continue to remain competitive in recruitment and retention efforts aimed at maintaining a higher qualified workforce. Uh, bargaining unit employee contributions are set forth in the AFSCME contract at a maximum of $75 per month, effective January 1, 2022. The bargaining unit employer employee contribution rates are consistent with a 92% employer, 8% employee cost allocation. So we request approval of the FY '22 health insurance contribution rates for non-bargaining unit employees.
Thank you. Any technical questions for Betty? Okay, could I get a motion to accept and place on file the employee health insurance FY '22 contribution rates?
So moved, Mayor Smith.
Is that Chuck?
Yes.
Okay, moved by Chuck.
Do you need a second?
Yes, seconded by, seconded by Deb. Any further discussion? Uh, could we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Finan.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Jim Goss.
Yes.
Tom Bruno.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Marlin.
Yes, that motion carries. Next item is the revised early Head Start expansion health and safety supplemental funding request. Brandy.
Good morning. Um, in July, I originally brought the health and safety request for early Head Start expansion, Head Start and early Head Start, which this board approved for submission. In July, Head Start Regional Office requested changes to the grant allocations, which affected the total amount, excuse me, in the early Head Start expansion request. In your packet, I provided with, provided you with the revised, uh, memorandum and narrative for the early Head Start expansion health and safety request, which was reduced, uh, to $117,751 to replace the roof and upgrade the security camera software at West Champaign. Our program is still requesting a waiver for the non-federal share match due to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm seeking your approval to move forward with the revised changes.
Any questions for Brandy? Okay, could I get a motion to place on file the revised early Head Start expansion health and safety supplemental funding request?
I'll make that move, Wiltshire.
Thanks, Katina. Is there a second?
Motion, I'm sorry, motion.
Second.
Second, Darlene.
Second, Darlene. Further discussion? Could we have a roll call?
Mayor Finan.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Jim Goss.
Yes.
Tom Bruno.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Marlin.
Yes, that motion carries. Um, item D, revised Head Start, early Head Start supplemental funding request. Brandy.
Also in your packet, uh, was the revised memorandum and narrative for the Head Start, early Head Start, he, um, health and safety request. Like the early Head Start expansion request, uh, Head Start Regional Office requested changes to the grant allocations between Head Start and early Head Start. Those changes were included in your packet. However, earlier this week, the Regional Office asked for an assessment to review the value of the facility, um, or the facility, uh, value if the HVAC, uh, upgrade was to be completed. Based on the urgency to submit the request and be included in the review process for funding, I removed, uh, the request to replace the HVAC system in Savoy, which decreased the total amount of the request to support the remaining needs to $127,493. Of that amount, $103,111 was portioned to Head Start and $24,382 for early Head Start. Any repairs that need to be made to the boiler units for, uh, this program year will be covered by other funding. As this was a recent change, I was unable to give you the revised documents, uh, for your, for the meeting this morning. However, I will have Debbie Peterick send those out to you, um, for your review. I do want to thank, uh, Christopher Walton and his staff for assisting us with the reviewing of the HVAC system needs at the Savoy Center, and I am confident we will, uh, together create a plan to address the concerns by next summer. Um, our program is still requesting a waiver for the non-federal share match, uh, due to the pan, impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. I am seeking your approval to move forward with the revised changes.
Any questions for Brandy? Okay, is there a motion to place on file this report, uh, this request?
So moved.
Who was, was that Deb?
Second, Wiltshire.
Okay.
It was me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Okay, will the clerk, uh, will the, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Finan.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Abstained.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Frühling Bogus.
Yes.
That, uh, pet, excuse me, Mary Alice Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Jim Goss.
Yes.
Yeah, Tom Bruno.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire. And Mary, uh, Mayor Marlin.
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted.
Thank you.
We have to polish our Zoom skills again.
Right.
Unfortunately. Uh, next item is the Head Start, uh, management report. Brandy.
All right, in your, uh, board packet, you should have received the May and June management reports, and if you have any questions, uh, please let me know. This morning, I wanted to share a few highlights from those reports. In the month of June, our program team prepared for the Focus Area 1 monitoring review that was completed in July. In the month of June, our program team prepared for the focus area one monitoring review that was completed in July. The review was completed, uh, through virtual interviews with managers, direct services staff, the policy council chair, and a member of the RPC board and policy council, Katina Wiltshire. At this time, we do not have a final report, um, from the Office of Head Start, but I believe we do, we did very well based on the reviewer's feedback. Recently, I received notice that we will have another review this program year. This is the focus area two, which is, will con, um, the reviewers will conduct a deeper dive into the component areas, including fiscal and the program's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, this review will be conducted in person at this time. As always, I will need support from a, um, board member or two to participate on these interviews. Also in June, the management team began strategic planning sessions on future programming and services. I am working towards obtaining staff and parent input as we continue this strategic planning process, um, and look for, um, look forward to the future. As outlined in our reports, our program is not at full enrollment, nor will it be in September, unfortunately. So far for the fall, our team has enrolled 409 children and pregnant women out of the 666 funded enrollment, uh, slots. The family support team has worked very hard to reach eligible families within our county and we continue to receive new applications, um, every day. However, due to the rise in COVID cases in our area, the lack of qualified applicants to open the remaining classrooms and a higher number of over-income families, it's been very difficult to fill the remaining slots. Our human resources, uh, department and the managers are continuously working together uh, to identify ways to recruit, uh, those qualified applicants needed to fill the staffing vacancies so that we can open the remaining, uh, classrooms. The Office of Head Start has sent out communication requesting programs to be at full enrollment by January 2022, um, unless programs are unable to, uh, do so due to the COVID pandemic in their, uh, community. As always, I will keep you updated on those enrollments, uh, in future meetings. Thank you.
Any questions for Brandy? I, I, I am curious, do, is the lack of qualified applicants due to the fact that people are just, um, hesitant to put their kids into preschool at this point? Or are, are we, are we serving every, I, I can't imagine we're serving everyone who could be served.
Yes, we, we're still hearing from families that they're worried about, um, the COVID transmissions. Um, and we have a lot of families that are not working at this time or they're ineligible, um, um, based on their income. Um, we are, we are doing our very best to reach out into all community areas where we believe, um, eligible families are. Um, we're working very closely with, uh, workforce, uh, housing authority, um, and, and many other agencies within our community to reach out to families. Uh, I'm hoping that, um, you know, we will get closer to full enrollment, um, within the next 30 to 60 days.
Are you saying because people are, are home, they're just choosing to keep their kids at home while they're not employed?
That is, that is correct. Some are keeping them at home or they're, um, asking relatives to take care of their children.
Got you.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, any other questions? All right, could I get a motion to approve the Head Start management report?
So moved, Darlene.
Second.
Second, Goss.
Moved by Darlene, seconded by Jim Goss. Further discussion? Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Finan.
Yes.
Christopher Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Frilling Bogus.
Yes.
Mary Als Wu.
Yes.
Darlene Kleppel.
Yes.
Jim Goss.
Yes.
Tom Bruno.
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Mayor Marlin.
Yes. That motion carries. That concludes the action items. We'll move on to program division updates. Uh, Betty?
Yes, just to piggyback on to Brandy's comments about the Head Start Focus Group One, our fiscal staff, uh, participated in that review and I'm pleased to report that we had positive, uh, response from the federal reviewer related to our fiscal infrastructure, our staff capacity and our responsiveness to the, uh, impacts of the pandemic. So we're looking forward to that report. Staff are also preparing for a CSBG and a CSBG CARES fiscal and programmatic monitoring review this fall. Uh, the staff are immersed in continuing to participate in the testing and build-out of the new Tyler Technologies Munis system. Um, this will be for our accounting and human capital management systems, which includes timekeeping and payroll. Parallel runs are going to begin in October, uh, just to resolve any outstanding issues with this new software and to confirm data reliability. The planned go-live date continues to be January 1. That may be optimistic, but that's what we're all hoping to achieve. Um, and then we're beginning the performance review process and the development of a merit-based salary proposal and we will submit that to the RPC board in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Um, Becky, Human Resources?
Good morning, everyone. The Human Resources Report included in your packet today represents personnel transactions from June 6, 2021 to August 18, 2021. RPC currently has 512 active employees, which includes 144 work experience participants and 57 summer youth participants. Once again, this year, RPC HR and the Fiscal Department provided HR and payroll services to support the Youth Employment Service Program. We are grateful that several employers hosted students to learn valuable life and work skills that will carry on with them through their chosen career paths. Some of the employers who hosted students this year include the Champaign Park District, Clark Lindsey, CU Public Health District, um, District Number Four, uh, Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club, Dream Freedom School and U of I Beckman Institute. The Human Resources Department has been focused on several staffing strategies, as you've heard in previous comments, today to attract, motivate and retain qualified staff amongst the challenges presented by COVID-19. The management team is working strategically to fill 40 open positions as soon as possible. Our team is constantly developing our recruitment strategies by connecting with local colleges, high schools, youth employment programs, churches and partnering with minority and veteran organizations. Several vacancies are a result of expansion of several community services programs, like the Utility Assistance Program, COVID-19 Relief and Energy Efficiency. It is also the time of year where we are working diligently to fill vacancies in our Head Start Early Childhood Program. Our HR team, along with our division management teams, have several applicants in the background check process and we have set the goal to reduce our vacancies by 50% over the next 30 days. It's a tall order, but we are all up for that challenge. Every year in October, performance reviews for the majority of the organization are completed to provide the opportunity for supervisors and employees to share valuable dialogue, feedback and goal-setting that supports high performance and engagement. This will be the last year for using the current performance management system, um, as we will be moving to the new human capital management system, as Betty mentioned, Munis Tyler, next year. Finally, our management team continues to focus on diversity, equality and inclusion initiatives. Our Employee Cultural Competency Committee has developed a diversity, equality and inclusion policy and gender-neutral dress code that will be reviewed in the near future. A Head Start Subcommittee is being developed so that the Head Start teachers can be a part of the Cultural Competency Committee while maintaining valuable services and ratios in the classroom. We will be looking at a diversity, equality and inclusion training needs assessment as well in the near future. Our Comprehensive Affirmative Action Plan was completed last week and we are working on a plan to review the information and data to ensure our hiring and internal job selection process, um, do not exhibit adverse impact and adverse action. Uh, there will be more to come on the Affirmative Action Plan data. Additionally, we are beginning to revise job descriptions and job postings to include our position on civility and inclusivity. Our senior management team is working with, um, AIM Employers Associations to offer LGBTQ plus training later this fall. To conclude, conclude, our efforts to ensure RPC services are inclusive to individuals with disabilities, um, our HR team has been working on the annual audit of, of over 20 workforce development partners, uh, which should wrap up in the next couple of weeks. I hope to, um, be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Becky? Okay, thank you, Becky. Uh, Lisa?
Good morning. Um, this is impromptu, but if Deb, if you can let me share my screen, I'm gonna throw up one, um, one screenshot that I think the, the group would like to see. Is that possible, Deb?
I think Maury can do that because he is the host. Maury, do you want to apply that?
I'll go ahead and start. Okay, I've got it. There we go. Do you see a chart with, uh, bunch of numbers on it? Okay. So, just a couple of highlights. Um, we have over the last, since probably the last five years, the Community Services Division has grown to, um, 80 employees. I think about five years ago, we were around 60 employees and now we're a little over 80. So with that, we've done some restructuring, um, to gain some capacity to be able to support our programs, the quality, our staff and then also our clients in the public. Um, we've added a Assistant Community Services Director, Katie Harmon, who's been in the community for years and actually has worked here at regional planning for a while, um, is our new Assistant Community Services Director and I'm very happy to have her join our team in that capacity. Delitzo highlighted that, um, we've had a significant amount of funding related to COVID. Specifically in community services, we are, um, we have managed through this pandemic and are currently managing $17 million of that COVID-related funding. Um, that is significantly a lot of the emergency rent assistance and our utility assistance, the LIHEAP program and a few other utility assistance programs. We are opening a new LIHEAP site, um, in Champaign that already is officially open. The LIHEAP season starts on September 1st and appointments are already scheduled out until October. So we will be able to offer not only appointments in Champaign and Urbana, but also by phone. So we've really, um, enhanced the way that we deliver services through, um, the LIHEAP program. So I'll go ahead and jump into our emergency rent assistance and the, the slide that you have up here. Essentially, we started providing emergency, um, rent assistance in February of 2021. Really, probably one of the first programs across the nation to launch. I know for sure we were one of the first, if not the first, in Illinois to launch our program in February. So during our first iteration of that program, um, I have the, the totals that we served, um, about 1,143 households and provided one point or $3.1 million through that time period. We then learned a lot during that period and kind of dusted off the programming and improved it a little bit and launched again another iteration in July. And since that time, we, um, what you'll see in this, this chart is a slow, what we felt was a slow response from the community. That is a little concerning. I think it's somewhat related to the eviction moratorium. Um, so in the, what you see in this chart from July 23rd, 2021 to August 6th, which is about two weeks, we dispersed about $175,000 to 50 households. This next, um, slot or the next column from August 6th to August 23rd, which again is about two weeks, um, it doubled. We were able to disburse about 431,000 and serve 114 households. Again, there are many more appointments available to individuals, but right now they're not seeking the assistance. Um, the other breakdown in this funding is about 80% of the funds are going out to rent and about 20% to utilities. That was a highlight for us in our programming that we were specifically also going to offer utility or rearage assistance, not just rent assistance. So that's been really meaningful in the community. Um, we've had positive feedback from the landlords, particularly about our program and the way we've structured it. Um, we've worked very closely with, with them and trying to, you know, the way we talk about this is we are definitely here to help the tenants, but we also want to assist the landlords. Um, it's kind of a package that, that helps both of them. So the other thing I thought I wanted to share with you is some demographic-related information. So, the households that we've served to date, about 50% of those households are single individual households. 37% are single-parent female. Another highlight is an age demographic. 55% of the households that we have served, um, the head of household was between the ages of 25 and 44. 20% were between the ages of 18 and 24. With regard to level of household income, 89% were under 50% of the federal poverty level. 10% were 50 to 150% of the federal poverty level and only 1% were between 150 and 200% of the federal poverty level. Yep, those were the highlights that I had. I am happy to answer further questions. I think the other highlight that I have is of the $5.8 million that we have for ERA one assistance, we have about $1.8 million remaining to disburse and we still haven't even begun to serve with our nearly $7 million of ERA two. So there's still a great deal of assistance to be provided. Um, and we're ready to do it. I'm happy to take any questions or provide further information.
Go ahead, Deb.
I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm not understanding your chart based on what you said because the numbers didn't track for me your verbal update. So, um, you know, it's showing from February to June, there were 1,143 households served.
Hmm.
And if the, the amounts underneath are the total amounts that, that you spent during that timeframe?
Yes.
Okay, so there was $2 million worth of rent assistance from February to June? Or there was $2 million?
No, it would be three, three, at the bottom, the total, $3,135.
That's the total of rent you, and utilities added together, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, if I said rent, I meant total, sorry.
So then from July, you have July of 23 or July 23? Is that 2 million in addition or that's a running total?
Running, it's a cumulative.
Running total.
Okay, so the total you've done by August 23rd of this year, you've had almost $4 million worth of assistance to people and you've served about 1,300 households. But you said you had $17 million worth of money?
Yes, so that highlight, thank you for highlighting that. This, um, chart is specific to our ERA one dollars, which were a total of a little over 5.8 million. And then we had another allocation called ERA two that right now we've received 40% of those funds, but the total amount that we potentially could receive but the total amount that we potentially could receive is around seven million.
Okay, so with the difference, which is about, you know, one-point-eight million, what happened to that? Did we have to return that to the feds? Does that get rolled over? So we still have that available to use?
So this chart, and all the things that I've reported on are only related to the five-point-eight million. So we still have one-point-eight million of that initial five-point-eight that we're working on allocating and providing currently right now. And then once that's gone, we would start with ERA Two.
So what kind of advertising are we doing so that people are aware that those funds are still available?
So we have the information on our website. We're doing boosted Facebook postings. We've had historically landlord forums. We do media, I mean, essentially, there's been ongoing, just recently, the most recent boost that we've done is reiterate out to through Facebook, because that's been most fruitful. We also are attending the eviction court calls every Monday. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Lisa, do you have a sense of once, and it's uncertain as when this eviction moratorium will end, but do you have a sense what the backlog of unpaid rent is in the county?
I do not. What I can tell you is what we're seeing with the people that are applying. Right now, a number, I can't even get a percentage or anything like that, but a number of the people that are applying are coming back for a second time. And sometimes when they're coming, they're only about a month behind. So, and then yet others that we see, they've never received the assistance, and we have some that are, the housing assistance is upwards of eighteen thousand dollars. So it's a wide range.
Well, is there a limit on the amount they can get in ERA?
So there are limits, and our current limits are a max of twenty thousand per household. It's very individualized, because we specifically provide past due utilities and past due rent. So if there's been payments that have been applied to their accounts, we deduct what we will provide based on that.
Are you expecting a flood of requests if this eviction moratorium actually is eliminated?
Possibly. You know, we were really actually surprised in the last couple months that we haven't seen a greater demand or people seeking assistance. We do believe that we will see a significant increase when the eviction moratorium lifts. We, the other context that I'll give you, a lot of times, people ask how quickly people can get appointments and get in to provide, get the assistance. Right now, today, there are four open appointments. So if, sometimes people can get a same-day appointment, they're usually able, if it's their schedule, to schedule out next day, same week, for sure. We're offering nearly a hundred appointments each week, and...
Wow.
Yeah.
And what's the number they call for an appointment, just so we can share that?
So all the information's on the website, and what they are able to do is access the application right on the website. We also have them at the libraries, all the local, well, Champaign, Urbana libraries, and then also in Ranthool. And it's a process where they do a very brief, simple step, turn in that part of the application, and then we contact them to come in for an appointment and finalize their application.
And are there walk-in opportunities, or is it all online?
So it's not online. In essence, it's a walk-in type of situation, because they immediately can access and start the application, and then they just turn it in, and that's their part in it to start it. So they can start it on the weekend, turn it in on Monday, there's drop boxes, turn it in at the front desk at the RPC, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, just one quick question for Lisa, just to provide information. Lisa, can you share with the commissioners when the two funds actually expire?
Sure. So the ERA One funding expires, I believe it is September twenty-twenty-two. It's either twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three. And then our ERA Two funds expire September of twenty-twenty-five. Now, naturally, I have pause and concern as we get out further away from COVID, with fingers crossed that there is continued recovery and we get past this. It would be more difficult to make a case, if you will, for the the need to be COVID-related, and it is COVID-related funding.
Okay, any other questions?
The last thing that I'll say, I apologize for interrupting one more time. We do still continue to provide our traditional rent assistance. So if there's households that are impacted just by hardships that are not COVID-related, we are still providing that assistance, and we do still receive and have received applications for non-COVID-related rent assistance.
Is that the same form?
It's a different application. It's a different funder.
Okay.
And that also is on our website. Well-utilized, well-known in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is remarkable, actually. Next up, Rita.
Rita is not here today, so we will skip her report, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to Justin Arnold for workforce development.
Good morning, everybody. You know, the way that we serve youth and adults is with career services. So that's career counseling, who am I, where do I want to go, what are the local jobs? It's supportive services, like transportation and childcare, and it's paying for tuition and fees. And so those are our career services. I say all that to say, right now is our busy time of the year, because everyone's going back to school for the fall. So our staff are very busy serving adults and youth who are going back to school and getting everyone enrolled and in position to succeed. Another way that we support the community is with training grants for employers. Right now, we're working with one employer who is expanding their manufacturing firm. They've mostly been focused on business-to-business sales. Now they're going into the consumer market. To do that, they need to add a machine, technology, and processes to be able to support that growth. They needed to train their employees and upscale those folks, and so we were able to work with them on a matching training grant. And so that's good for our region, because it's going to be a regional export, bringing money into the community. And then plus, those folks are going to get a promotion, because they've been able to upscale. So working with adults, working with youth, working with employers. One thing in addition to that is RPC, as you know, wants to be a premier planning agency and development agency. With that in mind, I look for opportunities to take workforce development in that direction. One thing that's come up over the past year or so is a lot of other regions have something called an apprenticeship navigator. I believe I brought it up to this group before. But apprenticeship navigator is a state-funded position that's a technical expert on apprenticeships, and then provides support and education to the business community in a region. Our region doesn't currently have an apprenticeship navigator. A lot of other regions do. You know that RPC Workforce Development Division has a Workforce Investment Board, that board is made up of employers and economic development and higher education. They've all said that RPC should take the role in getting that position. And then in our economic development region, we share that region with Vermillion County. Vermillion County is looking to RPC to take that leadership role, too. So with the support of the web and with others in our region and with the state, we're looking to go after that position, and that grant is due in September. And so we're writing that grant to submit it in September. If we get it, it'd be great, because it put us on the forefront of what the state's doing in workforce development with apprenticeships. Lastly, during the COVID pandemic, our office location at Mattis was mostly close to the public. This was due to safety concerns of two state departments, Employment Services and Department of Human Services. You may have seen a press release come out this past week that the state departments have allowed the Mattis location to open to the public by appointment only. That first day of reopening was yesterday. There was no surprises or concerns. That's good for us, because RPC has wanted to reopen to the public for a bit. And as long as we don't have any hiccups over the next month, we can start a discussion about how to and monitoring what's going on with COVID. But if everything's safe and we're in a safe position, we may be able to open up Mattis to the public for walk-ins in a month, which would be the first time since the early days of the pandemic. Those are my updates.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions for Justin? Okay, we'll move on to Delitzo's report.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to be brief, just a couple of things to highlight. I think with Brandy's report, our program, actually, I think we're doing pretty well in terms of moving towards meeting our funded enrollment numbers. In speaking to other programs in the state, I think, you know, a lot of programs are struggling. And we just received a notification from the federal government earlier this week that they will begin to enforce the need for programs to meet their funded enrollments beginning January first, two thousand twenty-two. If programs are not going to be meeting their funded enrollments, then, you know, they'll be placed on a corrective action plan, and potentially, I think, their funding could be reduced to to address whatever that gap is in terms of meeting funded enrollment. So I think our team within this program has done a tremendous amount of work, given the challenges that we have to get to the point where we are today as far as meeting our funded enrollment. In Lisa's report, one other thing just wanted to add is that, of course, the seventeen million dollars that she referenced includes other program areas, such as, we've had significant funding provided through our LIHEAP program. But then another new program that I think will begin October is the Federal Water Assistance Program. And the RPC, I believe, will be getting about seven hundred thousand dollars to provide assistance to households that have arrears, I think, in excess, minimum, I think, is two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we can provide up to fifteen hundred dollars per household in terms of assistance. And again, we're getting about seven hundred thousand dollars for that, and the hope is that program will begin in October. That is one-time funding from the federal government. So once those funds are expended, if there is no new appropriation, then that will be the end of that program. However, there is a state program that is expected to begin next year. Those legislation passed in the General Assembly, championed by our Regulated Water Utilities, which we are served by one in this area. And so we will be part of the state funding, and that program will be in place. It's not one-time funding, so, and it's being tailored after the LIHEAP program. And I think we're expecting that there will be maybe just close to about three million dollars overall. So it's not three million to RPC, but three million dollars statewide in funding to provide water and wastewater assistance. That's pretty much what I have to highlight.
Any questions for Delitzo? Okay, we'll move on to old business. Any updates there?
Mayor, do we want to just update the committee on what we're doing with the review for Delitzo?
Yes, would you like to do that?
I can. The Subcommittee has been formed. I believe that we are going to be sending out the self-evaluation as well as the evaluation forms for the committee in the next few weeks. Debbie, do I have that right?
I believe Delitzo's deadline is around September one, and then we're going to give the commissioners a couple of weeks to take time to review.
So that will be coming. Then our Subcommittee will meet again, we'll review all of that. We'll talk with Delitzo, and then we'll bring a recommendation forward to the commissioners. I think we're hoping by our October meeting, so maybe for the first time. And the entire time he's been employed by us, we will actually have it all done before the budget.
That's our goal, and it will happen. Thank you. I'll tag on to that. We did extend the, as far as old, another item of old business, we did extend the application period for a couple of weeks for the community member for the RPC, because we only had, I think, a couple of people apply, so.
We're up to three, Mayor.
We're up to three now, okay. And the deadline for that was September?
Seventh.
Seventh, okay. And then I haven't forgotten, we do need to get a review of the bylaws underway, and I need to talk with Delitzo and staff before I move on that one. But I haven't forgotten that either. Any other old business? Any new business? Okay, seeing none. Do we need a motion for adjournment?
You can just declare the meeting adjourned.
Okay, I shall do that then. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and thank you again, RPC, for everything you do for our community.
Thank you.
We couldn't do this without you.